We have a problem with the audio. We're trying to fix it.
brutally murdered this past week. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, and our next order of business is proclamations. We have one to be presented by Councilman Lavelle for Lynn Hayes-Freeland. Do you want everyone to come up?
Please bring, come forward with all your guests. Want to come up Brenda? For the last over forty years, Ms. Freeland has been a voice here in the city and we were, we will surely miss your voice on the radio, behind the news camera and everywhere that we've seen you. We know you're retiring, but we also know you're going to be sticking around doing some other good work. But we wanted to take a moment to thank you for all the years of service that you provided to the city. Whereas Lynn Hayes-Freeland, a native Pittsburgher, first African-American woman to host a weekday radio show on KDK Radio, and longest-running KDK TV broadcaster, will be retiring after forty-five years in the broadcasting industry. Whereas Lynn began her broadcasting career as the producer of the Roy Foxx Show on KDK Radio in 1976. Moving on to KDK TV a year later, where she held a variety of positions including fuel producer for Evening Magazine, the producer of a variety of other public affairs programs, including Weekend Magazine Vibrations and the station's annual Children's Hospital Telethon. Whereas in 1989, Lynn moved to the KDK News TV Department as a general assignment reporter while also serving as the host of KDK TV's Waiting Child segment for more than fifteen years. A bi-weekly program designed to find adopted homes for special needs or hard-to-place children, as nearly seventy percent of the children featured on the segment were adopted. Whereas some of Lynn's most memorable guests on her TV show have included Rosa Parks, James Baldwin, Maya Angelou, Toni Morrison, Oprah Winfrey, and Minister Louis Farrakhan. Whereas Lynn is currently the host of Lynn Hayes-Freeland Show, a community and public affairs program that is instrumental in bringing community issues to the forefront. Whereas other notable endeavors include her work with Dollar Bank as the face of their successful Mortgage for Mothers Initiative, a home-buying seminar designed to help women in the Pittsburgh area become first-time home buyers, her membership in the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, and her services on the boards of several nonprofit organizations. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh recognize Ms. Lynn Hayes-Freeland's contributions in creating a major communications platform that has been crucial in spreading the word about issues that impact the quality of life in the African-American community. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare October 12th, 2021 to be Lynn Hayes-Freeland Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
You have a motion to approve in a second. Proclamation is approved. Congratulations.
Why did I not feel embarrassed until you said Lynn Hayes-Freeland Day? But I just want to thank all of you. I mean, I have worked with all of you over the years and, and some of the folks out here. My close friends, my producer Tamara Rush Cox is with me, my radio producer, Brenda Tate, who she and Ola Jackson thought this was a great idea. But at the end of the day, you know how they say all politics is local? Well, all broadcasting is local as well. It's about telling the stories in our neighborhoods, in our communities. And all I can say is thank you for giving me the opportunity to tell your stories.
Yeah, can I say something though beforehand? Because Lynn and I have had the opportunity to work a number of times over the years. And the, when I think of Lynn Hayes-Freeland, the words that come to mind is class act. You are going to be greatly, greatly missed. You are of a generation that is no more, you know? And, and it worries me, you know, that we lose strong voices like you when it is such an important time to hear a journalist like yourself. So I wish you nothing but the best. Yeah. Always. Yeah, thanks. Thank you. Good luck.
And I have one. Do I have the people here for John Allen Coffey Jr. Come up. Councilman Cross is going to present for me.
How are you today?
Hi, everyone. We'll see you on Saturday because you have an event. Yes, I am, but I want you to talk about it when you're done with the proclamation. Okay.
Oh, let's do one together.
Okay, good morning. So. Okay, all right. So whereas among cancers that affect both men and women, colorectal cancer is the second-leading cause of cancer deaths in the United States, where more than fifty-two thousand people die of it each year. And although March is National Colon Cancer Month, the Choffee, Chocolate Coffee? The Coffey family believes prevention and awareness should not be restricted to just one month. And whereas the late John Allen Coffey Jr. Was a victim of colon cancer at the age of fifty-five, being diagnosed with stage four colon cancer at the age of fifty-two. He left behind three children, Tiara, Jordan, and Chiquela. And whereas Mr. Coffey was the Vice President of All Purpose Cleaning Service Incorporated, a well-respected minority family-owned business in the Elliott neighborhood of the City of Pittsburgh, which included his mother Mary, founder and president and sister Dr. Lisa Coffey, Director of Administrations. And whereas as a local business owner, John formed relationships with many of the residents in the West End community. He spent a great deal of time interacting, empowering, and uplifting those in need. It was not unheard of for John to bring community members into the office for meals, rides, ride them to places that they needed to go, hand them some money for a little extra help, or even offer them John, jobs. And whereas to honor his legacy, each year around the anniversary of his death, All Purpose Cleaning Service Incorporated sponsors a community event to bring awareness to the silent killer colon cancer. Last year, the event drew over one hundred and fifty people, and the family hopes this year's event will be even larger. And whereas this year's event will be held on Saturday, October sixteenth, at nine twenty, Chartiers Avenue, and will include a health and wellness booth with colon cancer information and resources, a farmer's market, juice tasting booth, entertainment, and testimonials from cancer survivors, and all free to the public. So now therefore be it resolved that this Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby commend All Purpose Cleaning Service Incorporated for bringing attention to colon cancer by celebrating the life of the late John Allen Coffey Jr. And therefore be it even further resolved that this Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Saturday, October sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one to be the Late John Allen Coffey Jr. Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
I have a motion to approve in a second.
No move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamation is approved.
Thank you so much. And on behalf of the Coffey family, I'm here to give a few brief remarks. It's overwhelming. It's emotional. My brother was an amazing man. But thank you to council for recognizing our efforts to keep colon cancer awareness prevalent. We need to have these discussions because it is a silent killer. As you can see, he left behind three young children. My mother is grieving, and I'm his only sister. It's hard to lose a loved one. But when it can prevent it through early testing and diagnosis, that's our mission. Our goal is really just to tell other people. My brother passed away, but his death should not be in vain. And we want to encourage others to go get the preventative measures. Take the test so that you can save your life. So thank you for recognizing us. I truly appreciate this honor. On Saturday, in front of our business location, we're going to have an all-day community affair. It's free, open to the public. We have a band. We have food. We have gifts, giveaways, raffles. We have testimonials from cancer survivors. We have my brother's physicians who are going to stop by to just give some, some remarks so that everyone can go get tested and save their life as well. So thanks again.
Any other members want to say anything? Do you want to say anything else? I just want to thank the family. I think he'd be so proud of everything that you've done. And the event is amazing. And as you said, it's free. I tried to give money and they wouldn't take it last, last year. I'm trying to like, let me just pay for something. And they just wouldn't take anything. So I just want to thank you for all that you're doing to raise awareness and to let you know how proud he'll be. And this will go into the history of the City of Pittsburgh, the proclamation. So you understand the importance of a proclamation. It goes into our vault, and we also now digitized our records so that it's part of Pittsburgh history forever. So he'll be part of Pittsburgh history. So thank you. Would take a photo. They just signed and Councilman called to go up for his test. Thank you so much. And now we have four proclamations to be read into the record. We have cut one from Councilman Burgess, Councilman O'Connor, Councilwoman Strasburger, and Councilman Cross.
Reverend Burgess presents Bill Number Two Thousand and Nine. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby commend Horace Turner for his service in the Army and his contribution to jazz music. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Friday, October eighth, two thousand and twenty-one to be Horace Lee Turner Day in the City of Pittsburgh. Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number Two Thousand and Eleven. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby respectfully honor the memory of Christopher Ribarchek, who gave so much to his community, to the Greenfield Baseball Association, to Greenfield Elementary School, and to his loving and devoted family. Councilman O'Connor also presents Bill Number Two Thousand and Twelve. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize and commend the extraordinary career of Jan Glick and the legacy of strength, competency, trust, and leadership she left with Big Brothers Big Sister of Greater Pittsburgh. The Council congratulates her for her years of remarkable leadership and wishes her well on her retirement. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Wednesday, November twenty-first, November twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-one to be Jan Glick Day in the City of Pittsburgh. Councilwoman Strasburger presents Bill Number Two Thousand and Fourteen. Be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh urges colleagues at the Allegheny County Government to do the same and to dedicate funding to implementing primary prevention strategies to address lead exposure and lead poisoning in Allegheny County. Councilman Cross presents Bill Number Two Thousand and Seventeen. Now therefore be it resolved that in support of the manufacturing industry's efforts to fill positions critical to families, the industry and the regional economy, the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does proclaim October two thousand and twenty-one to be Manufacturing Month within the City of Pittsburgh. And Councilman Cross also presents Bill Number Two Thousand and Eighteen. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh commands and celebrates the efforts of the Homeless Children's Education Fund and joins them in commemorating Homeless Children's Awareness Week. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare October eighteenth to the twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-one, to be Homeless Children's Awareness Week in the City of Pittsburgh.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve in a second?
Remove.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The opposed proclamations are approved. Thank you. Let me move this on to our next order of business, and which is public comment. And I would like to remind, I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are or may be before city council. Threats and profanity will not be permitted. May we have the first speaker, please? And I have the first registered speaker as Jaclyn Sebeck. Jaclyn? We have Jaclyn Sebeck. She's not on. Okay, thank you. Then we have Dr. Ronald Miller. Good morning, Dr. Miller.
Dr. Ronaldan Miller, Belsuver and Homewood. Global Intelligence Society candidate for Mayor of Pittsburgh, two thousand and twenty-one. Author, Global Intelligence, the fusion of the intelligences or forms of reasoning of the twenty-one primary disciplines. GlobalIntelligenceSociety.org. Documentation is available for all the claims in my public comment. This council is concerned with allowing individual citizens to be a voice of the people. Can any one individual be the voice of the people? I don't think so. There are many peoples within the people of Pittsburgh and the USA. I never want to be called the voice of the people, but I do not ever stop searching to get and to give out information about the images that individuals use to make their identities racial, ethnic, locative, disciplinary, or educative. Why I became a member of the African Studies Association and created African Intelligence Month in two thousand and twelve. Association for Asian Studies, American Studies Association, and the Council for European Studies, creating intelligence months for each. Why I developed a national network of direct email, telephone, and post-mail links between the GIS and the local city governments of the capitals of all fifty states, both mayor and council. Can you say that, Ganey Moreno? Why I did so between the GIS and the local newspapers and TV channels of all fifty state capitals and the largest cities in all fifty states. Broadcasting is more than just local. Anyone who says that is lying. The Global Intelligence Society, Democratic Party, Republican Party networks. Which of these three is more likely to provide information with less ideological bias and intelligence with greater critical edge? Why I secured memberships in the general associations of the twenty-one primary disciplines, including physics, chemistry, and biology, an unparalleled achievement that gained me recognition in who's who America, who's who in the world, and by the Cambridge, England, UK International Biographical Center as one of two thousand of the most important intellectuals worldwide in the early twenty-first century. This disciplinary involvement provides me and so Pittsburgh with access to an individual and institutional network of information and intelligence from more than five hundred thousand specialists across the entire research and educational spectrum or rainbow. Can you say that, councilors? Can Ganey or Moreno? Why I have direct network linkage with the, with the presidents and chancellors of the state universities in all fifty states. How would a mayor with this net not advantage Pittsburgh?
Thank you, Dr. Miller. Our next speaker is Mary Beth Paul. Mary Beth Paul?
Yes.
Good morning.
Hi. Good morning. Thank you for having me on. So I'm fifty-seven years old and I've lived in Pittsburgh my entire life. I own numerous homes in the city, but the one that I'm referring to is located in Knoxville. A couple of years back, maybe two years or so, the city has permitted a towing company to place vehicles on the street, on their land. It turned into a junkyard. It's on the corner of Bronson Road and Reefer. And because of this, they have pushed all of the vehicles that people have homes there down to my side of the way. And it's, it's really a hazard. It's an eyesore. There's actually a car that is sitting on the sidewalk in front of a business where people walk and the vehicle says, "Fight me," real big on it. Or not "Fight me," I'm sorry. It says, "Eat me." Kids are passing by this. This is a nuisance. I have called three-one-one. I've called the police. These vehicles are wrecked. They're in pieces. They're placed on the street. I don't want to close any businesses. I think we need more businesses within the City of Pittsburgh. I just am not sure that this is a great location for this business. But if in fact it is a good position, I think that they should need to put a maybe ten-foot fence around the property to keep it enclosed so that folks can't see it. I have a renter that moved in in July and is now telling me that she is moving out because there's no place to park because of this issue. And she don't feel safe to walk, park on two streets over, and walk in the dark home. So it really has created for the neighborhood a hazard. And again, little kids are walking to school, passing this vehicle that literally says, "Eat me" on it. I can't get my photos up here. I wanted to show you all a few.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Naomi Mullen. Naomi Mullen.
Good morning.
Morning, Naomi.
Hi, Teresa. I would also like to thank Lynn Hayes-Freeland because her show in nineteen eighty-eight is how I learned about the initiative to recruit women and minorities for the Fire Bureau. And I've been blessed with many opportunities because of that. Thank you. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bonner. The Board of Education Superintendent and Solicitor, in conjunction with Fourth River Development, have falsely claimed that there was community support for the sale of Bonner School. The Board has not revisited their vote under the misunderstanding of community support. That leaves the impression of absolute and total disregard for their policy that mandates community involvement to the best of their ability. If that was truly the best they are willing to do, it explains the high level of dissatisfaction with Pittsburgh Public Schools. Regarding their golden boy, Gregory Development, it defies logic that he would sign an agreement to buy the building. His seeing complete rejection by the community of Bonner and not a single voice of consent proves his boldness. Does Gregory have a politician up his sleeve to ensure rezoning? My sincere, consistent request is that city council create a resolution to block zoning change and support a green space to replace Bonner's school building. Do your part for the environment. Reduce urban heat. Reduce watershed to Route Fifty-One. Increase green space to benefit all ages and stages. Protect the children at the playgrounds across the street. Let's make it wheelchair accessible to allow those who have difficult access to nature the ability to enjoy it. Tear down detrimental problem buildings, not safe, stable neighborhoods. You want to reduce watershed to Route Fifty-One, and this is your opportunity to help that need. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bonner. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have Mr. William Parker as our next registered speaker. William Parker.
Yes, hello, everyone. My name is Will Parker, and I'm Pittsburgh's son. First off, I would like to thank Lynn's Lynn Hayes-Freeland for all the work she's put in. I've been one of those people who was fortunate enough to be interviewed by her. Secondly, I would like to get into this issue with this U R A, a proven Salem's to open the market, the grocery store up there in the Hill District. I have a problem with that because I don't think that there was a proper advertisement for the proposals to be submitted. And now some like people are just now becoming aware that now there's, someone has been named as the new tenant being Salem's. And my problem is why couldn't the Hill District find a black person to open this market? And this goes to Lavelle. You know, I just don't see what's going on right, right here with this Black Pittsburgh Matters. You got a Hill District predominantly black neighborhood. Why you couldn't find one? Why you couldn't find one black African American to run the show, especially with this ARP money? Some of that money could have been put right directly towards this and covered the food and security issues that we're facing here. My thing is, you know, as we all know, Salem's already has a market down in the Strip District. And my thing is, why do we keep giving other groups or other ethnic groups their second and third opportunities before we give our own people our first opportunity? I have a problem with that. And I think a lot of other people do as well. Another one of the things I wanted to say, and I want everybody to know out there, if you got a cell phone and it got apps on it, you're in the tech whether you know it or not. Specifically, I want, I'm speaking to the black community because we got to get involved with this. We got to start creating our own apps. We just can't be the consumers. Then I want to go on to, I'm still wondering why no other council member has given their official endorsement to Adgang. Even though I'm not in favor of Adgang, I'm still trying to figure out because you all are on Democratic Part, part of the Democratic Party. I've seen no official endorsement in that, in that, you know, it's just strange to me. Lastly, I would like to announce right now that if this doesn't work out for me and I'm not elected as Pittsburgh's next mayor, I will be running for governor of Pennsylvania. That's a guarantee. And I'll be highlighting what's happening here in Pittsburgh and a lack of community engagement as far as with the APR funding, as far as with tech funding for African Americans. So count on me going up against Josh Shapiro and count on me bringing awareness to what's happening here in Pittsburgh. And with that, have a good day.
Thank you. Have a good day. Are there any further speakers? We have no further registered speakers. Are there any further speakers in the audience, in chambers? Good morning, Ms. Brown.
Good morning. My name is Yvonne S. Brown. I want to thank, there has been some virtual speakers. There was a female that had said that I should not be chased around this room by the Sergeant of Arms. She sees that I'm not a threat to anyone in this room except with the truth. When I bring the truth, they don't want to hear it. I am still upset at Mr. Burgess. I still remember you telling my six-year-old granddaughter that it was not the time and the place that she should speak. I want him to explain to me how Ms. Strausberger can bring her baby in here when he was four months, she had disappeared, never told that she was on maternity leave, come back with a baby, sat on her lap all through the meeting, but you will tell my black child, grandchild, that she has no business speaking here. Mr. Burgess, I also spoke against you many a times, but I can remember, do you remember how when you first were running in Homewood, you had took my hand and asked me to please endorse you? I told you at that time, no, I was endorsing Les Ludwig. So I believe that when I didn't endorse you, you turned against me and my grandchild. I am really upset. I want to know, how come Ms. Strausberger, what, you don't have a babysitter so you can sit home? You and Ms. Gross, both of you, how do you get to sit home? Come down here like I do and anybody else that wants to speak. I don't appreciate it because to me, I figure it's a theft of service for both of them. Theft of service, yes, Ms. Gross. I still remember how you said that you and the mayor had made a decision that you would not take the meeting to the Hill District but Lawrenceville. I told you at that time, up in the Hill District, Kedaw, Irving, we don't have cars. We want to be able to have cars to be able to travel. Lawrenceville, you made the decision, see how close you live? You don't care whether you have, you have your own little city like. I am really upset because I want Mr. Kraus to remember, I was stopped a couple of years ago by a white male employee of the city that said, Mr. Kraus is wrong. He says he's mistreating you. He says, and I'm telling you, I'm also gay. So if a gay man can come and tell me that you, another gay man, as president of council, can disrespect me and my grandchildren, then you understand you're wrong. Have a nice day.
Are there any further speakers in chambers? Any further speakers? Any further speakers? Seeing no further speakers, we'll now move on to our next order of business, which is the presentation of papers. Can we have Councilman Burgess, Chair of Urban Recreation, Councilman, call for, Councilman Burgess.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. And Councilman Calkiel, Chair of Public Works.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill number 1994, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for Proposed Land Development Located at 2400 East Carson Street at the Parcel Number 12A23602 and South 24th Street at the Parcel Number 12L264. Bill number 1995, Resolution Adopting the Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for 665 Ridge Avenue, a light of life ministry project which will, which will involve the development of a lot with proposed renovations in vertical addition to their existing building. The site address is 665 Ridge Avenue in the 22nd Ward.
Thank you. And Councilman Kraus, Chair of Human Resources. Good morning, Councilman.
Good morning, Madam President. No new papers.
Thank you, Councilman. And Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law. Good morning, Councilman. Thank you.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill number 1996, Resolution Amending Resolution 452, which authorized the mayor and the city solicitor to enter into a professional services agreement with DeForest, Colsonic, Yokitis, and Barodinelli for professional legal services regarding ethics matters by increasing the total spend by $25,000 for a new not-to-exceed amount of $70,000. Bill number 1997, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 372, which authorized the mayor and the city solicitor to enter into a professional services agreement with Jones Posadilis for professional legal services for an employment-related matter before the Human Relations Commission by increasing the total spend by $8,019.58 for a new not-to-exceed amount of $32,019.58. Bill number 1998, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of Francisco Munen, His Attorney, in the Amount of $30,000 Related to the Full and Final Settlement of a Case File in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas. Bill number 1999, Resolution Authorizing the Director of the Department of Finance to Enter into a License Agreement with Module Design, Inc., and ECS Mid-Atlantic LLC to Allow the Performance of Pre-Development Geo-Technical Survey Work on Designated City Property in Order to Facilitate the Construction of a 10-Unit Mixed-Income Housing Development Project. Bill number 2000, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of Finance to Enter into a Donation and Professional Services Agreement with the Pittsburgh Land Bank and GRB Law to Document the Donation of Legal Services Relating to the Performance of Designated Quiet-Title Actions on Behalf of the City and Further Pursuant to Chapter 210 of the City Code, Accepting the Donation by Pittsburgh Land Bank of Such Legal Services to Be Performed by GRB Law on Behalf of the City.
Thank you. And Councilman O'Connor, Chair of Public Safety Services. And can I have Councilman Lavelle for Councilman O'Connor?
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill number 2001, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 512, Previously Amending Resolution Number 246 and Resolution Number 133, Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety to Enter on Behalf of the City Into a Fourth Amended Professional Services Agreement with Johnson Controls for Continued Security Camera Integration and Support Services at an Additional Cost of $498,555 and Extending Such Agreement for One Year and Increasing the Overall Agreement Compensation to $6,188,557. Bill number 2015, Resolution Directing the Bureau of Police to Take Immediate Steps to Improve Its Data Collection and the Publication thereof in Such a Matter That Meet Specific Deaggregation Criteria, Making Any Necessary and Appropriate Changes to Its Internal Operating Procedures to Comply with the Content of this Resolution. Bill number 2016, In Ordnance Amending and Supplementing the Pittsburgh Code of Ordnance as Title I, Administrative Article 11, Human Resources, Chapter 198, Campaign Finance Regulations, So As to Permit the Use of Fund Held by a Candidate Committee for Childcare Expenses.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Strausberger, Chair of Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
Thank you, Madam President.
Councilwoman Strausberger presents Bill number 2002, Resolution Amending Resolution 548, which amended Resolution Number 801, which authorized the mayor and director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to Enter into an Agreement or Amendment with AMCOM for the Lease of the Multi-Function Devices and the Managed Print Services for a Sum Not to Exceed $375,000 per Year for Five Years by Increasing the Not-to-Exceed Amount to $2585,000. Bill number 2003, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of Innovation and Performance to Enter into a One-Year Agreement with Vision Point System to Obtain Tulio Flex Support Services to Meet the Needs of the City at a Sum Not to Exceed $30,000. Bill number 2004, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to Enter into an Agreement with Google for their Assured Workload Program to Securely Store Sensitive Data in Google Cloud Platform According to Federal Data Standards to be in Compliance with the U.S. Department of Criminal Justice Information Systems.
Thank you. And Councilman Bobby Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill number 2005, Resolution Providing for an Agreement and Contract with Brumberg and Associates, LLC for the Purposes of Providing Effective Communication Services to People with Disabilities for the Payment of the Cost Not to Exceed $27,000. Bill number 2006, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 216, Entitled, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of City Planning to Apply for Grant Funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources Community Conservation Partnerships Program to Provide Funding for the Master Planning Process of Fowler Park to Add Language to Allow the City to Accept the Grant Award and Spend the Funds. Bill number 2007, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 840, Entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2020 Capital Budget and the 2020 CDBG Program and the 2020-2025 Capital Improvement Program, So As to Identify Specific Projects in City Council District Six and Authorize a Subsequent Agreement for Operation, Administrative Expenses, Maintenance, Purchase of Equipment, and/or Rehabilitation of Neighborhood Facilities on Behalf of the Residents of the City.
Thank you. And myself, Chair of Hearings, have one communication. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Council President Kale Smith presents Bill number 2008, Communication from Kevin Paulus, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, Submitting Acting Pay Approval on Behalf of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure for Mike Panzita for the Act and Pay Policy Revised in June of 2018.
Thank you, Councilman. Can I have a second? All in favor? Thank you. And now we'll move on to the unfinished businesses. Is there any unfinished business before council? Seeing none, we'll move on to the reports to committee for final action. All in favor of the passage, or if I, when the name is called, those opposed will vote no. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Lavelle, Committee on Finance and Law. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill number 1988, Report of the Committee on Finance and Law for October 6 with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill number 1830, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of D'Appeloni and Engineering Division of Ground Technologies, Inc., in the Amount of $7,039.68 for Expert Services relating to a Case File in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas. Bill number 1894, Resolution Amending Resolution 345, which authorized the mayor and the city solicitor to Enter into a Professional Services Agreement with Fox Rothschild for Professional Consulting and Legal Services in Relation to False Claims Act Litigation by Increasing the Total Spend by $15,000 for a New Not-to-Exceed Amount, $295,000. Bill number 1895, Resolution Repealing Items and Resolutions Approved on Various Dates, which authorized the sale of property in various wards of the city due to an Incompletion of Sales, Item A through D, 6824 Fifth, 502 Winterburn, 2145 Maisette, and 1936 Nobles Town. Bill number 1931, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of George Powell in the Amount of $3,403.76 in Settlement of a Claim for Damage to a Park Vehicle from a City Environmental Services Vehicle Backing Into It on December 17 of 2020. Bill number 1940, Ordinance Amending the Fee Section of the City Code at Multiple Locations to Refleet Current Practices and to Bring Those Sections in Compliance with Chapter 170 Fees. Bill number 1941, Ordinance Amending the City Code at Title II, Fiscal Article I Administration in Order to Make Technical Corrections in Chapters 218 and 219 Related to Past Events That No Longer Exist. Bill number 1942, Ordinance Amending and Updating the City Code at a Number of Locations to Repeal Boards, Commissions, Committees, Councils, Special Meetings, and Task Forces That Functionally No Longer Exist and to Remove References to Boards, Commissions, Councils, Special Meetings, and Task Forces That Have Previously Been Repealed. Bill number 1968, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 93, Providing for an Agreement and/or Contract for the Purchase of Materials, Supplies, Equivments, and/or Services for Various Projects in Connection with the City Council Neighborhood Needs Program in Council District Three and Providing for the Payment of Costs by Transferring $2,500 to the South Side Community Council. Total Cost of all District Three Neighborhood Needs Project is not to exceed $51,943.77. Bill number 1969, Resolution Further Amending and Supplementing Resolution Number 855 of 2011, Entitled, Adopting and Approving the 2012 Capital Budget by Adding South Side Community Council $2,500 Within District Three Neighborhood Needs.
Thank you. You've heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Councilman Kraus.
Madam President, may I offer up an amendment for you, Madam President, on Bill 1895?
Is there a second? Any discussion? Thank you. All in favor? Bill's amended. Thank you, Councilman. And Councilman Wilson? Or I'm sorry, Strausberger? Do you have an amendment?
Yes, Madam President, thank you. I would like to offer up an amendment for Bill 2021-1942. This would simply keep and retain the Youth Commission and Council as well as the Records Management Commission. So it would remove the striking from that portion of the ordinance and retain those two commissions.
Thank you. Motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor? I'm sorry, Councilwoman Gross, did you? Did you have something to say, Councilwoman?
I am. I'm supportive of the amendment. So if we voted on the amendment, that's fine. But I would like to ask a question, if I may, for 1942 on the boards and commissions. So it occurs to me, after we talked about it last week, and then when I see this amendment, that it would be nice to have a list of the boards and commissions that still exist, kind of just on its own, now that we've kind of like deleted out which ones are gone. So I just wanted to clarify that. So I just wanted to clarify that the city clerk does keep that list. Is that still true? And that the list of kind of like what the term, like how many seats are in each board and commission, what the terms are, who sits on the boards and commissions? Is that in one place that you could share with all members so that we all have the same information, and it's current and accurate and all that kind of stuff?
So we have added the Boards and Commission Module to our Granicus and the Legislature site. However, the boards and commissions are managed by the mayors. But you can go on to our site. We have updated it. It is current.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
So let me just clarify what you just said, Madam Clerk, if you don't mind, Madam President. So of course, the mayor's office, almost all of these boards and commissions, I think the mayor nominates people, and city council, you know, comes over to city council and it's on our agenda when it does that, right? So we have that information.
Yes.
Right. Okay, so if I go on to the Legislature, and I'm sorry to be pedantic about this, but I do want, I think it's important that everybody has the same information available to them. So we just go on to Legislature and look for the boards and commissions, and then there's like a total list. So you don't need to know which board and commission, you know, you don't need to like magically know the name already. You can see a list of boards and commissions and then open each one or something like that.
Yes.
That's perfect. That's perfect. Very helpful. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you, Councilwoman. Any further discussion? Thank you, Madam Clerk, for going through that. Seeing no further discussion, the bills are ready for final action. All in favor of the passage, but if I were the name is called, those opposed will vote no. Clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill.
Hi.
Ms. Gross.
Hi.
Mr. Kraus.
Hi.
Mr. Lavelle.
Hi.
Mr. O'Connor. Ms. Strasburger.
Hi.
Mr. Wilson.
Hi.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Hi.
Eyes eight, no zero.
Thank you. The bills haven't received. The legally required number of votes has finally passed. That moves us to Councilman O'Connor, Corey O'Connor, Committee on Public Safety Services, Councilman Lavelle for Councilman O'Connor, please.
Madam President.
Madam Clerk's on it. Thank you. Thank you.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill number nineteen eighty-nine, Report of the Committee on Public Safety Services for October sixth, twenty twenty-one, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number nineteen thirty-two, Resolution Amending Resolution number five thirty-four, authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Public Safety on behalf of the city to enter into an amended grant agreement with the United States Department of Justice to receive monies from the twenty eighteen Byrne Justice Assistant Grant Program and further authorizing legitimate expenditures by the Bureau of Police for purchases authorized by the amended grant agreement and for the execution of agreement or contracts for any equipment or services required in connection with the execution of said grant. Said amended agreement shall not exceed one hundred seventeen thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars.
Thank you. You've heard the reading and the title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, bills are not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage, but if I were the name is called, those opposed will vote no. Clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill.
Hi.
Ms. Gross.
Hi.
Mr. Kraus.
Hi. And Madam Clerk, may I also register? I vote some all remaining bills. I have a pre-scheduled appointment.
Thank you, Councilman.
Mr. Lavelle.
Hi.
Ms. Strasburger.
Hi.
Mr. Wilson.
Hi.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Hi.
Eyes eight, no zero.
Thank you. The bills haven't received. The legally required number of votes are finally passed. That moves us on to Councilman Anthony Coghill, Committee on Public Works.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill number nineteen ninety, Report of the Committee on Public Works for October sixth with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number nineteen twenty, Resolution Amending and Supplementing Resolution number five sixty-seven, entitled Resolution Amending and Supplementing Resolution number forty, entitled Resolution Providing for a Contract for the Use of Existing Contracts or the Use of Existing Agreements, Providing for the Design and Replacement of the Charles Anderson Bridge and Providing for a Reimbursement Agreement with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation and Providing for the Payment of the Cost Thereof Not to Exceed nine hundred sixty-five thousand, seven hundred ninety-four dollars and three cents to Add Further Budget Authority for a Letter of Amendment to the Original Reimbursement Agreement Not to Exceed a Total of nine hundred sixty-seven thousand, forty-four dollars and three cents. This Resolution Increases the Authorized Not to Exceed Amount to one million, one hundred seventy-five thousand, three hundred twenty-four dollars and sixty-six cents and Names Michael Baker as the Professional Services Provider for this work. Bill number nineteen twenty-one, Resolution Providing for a Further Amended Reimbursement Agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for Costs Associated with the Charles Anderson Project, Providing for the Payment Not to Exceed three million, six hundred and ninety thousand dollars in Increase of two million, five hundred and five thousand dollars to Increase the Project's Budget for Preliminary Engineering and to Add Budget for Final Design and Right-Away Phases. The Previous Amendment to Agreement fifty-one five forty-four was authorized by Resolution five sixty-seven of twenty nineteen. Bill number nineteen twenty-two, Resolution Granting Unto Luxury Property Group East Liberty LLC, Their Successors and Assigns the Privilege and License to Construct, Maintain, and Use at Their Own Cost and Expense a Canopy at sixty-twelve Center Avenue, Seventh Ward, Eighth Council District. Bill number nineteen twenty-three, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Enter Into an Agreement with the P.A. Department of Community and Economic Development Multi-Module Transportation Fund Program, Should the Grant Be Awarded by D.C.E.D. to Provide Funding for the South Twenty-first Street Complete Green Street Project. The Grant Proposal Includes an Ask of three million dollars with a Local Match of four hundred seventy-three thousand, six hundred and eighteen dollars to be Contributed by the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority. In the Event This Grant Is Awarded, This Resolution Provides for an Agreement and Expenditures Not to Exceed three million, four hundred seventy-three thousand, six hundred and eighteen dollars. Bill number nineteen twenty-four, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Submit an Application to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development Multi-Module Transportation Fund Program to Provide Funding for Second Avenue Streetscape Project. The Grant Proposal Includes an Ask of two million, one hundred and five thousand dollars, one hundred, two million, one hundred and five thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars with no local match required. In the Event the Grant Is Awarded, This Resolution Provides for an Agreement and Expenditures Not to Exceed two million, one hundred and five thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars. Bill number nineteen twenty-five, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Submit an Application to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development Multi-Module Transportation Fund Program for the Center Avenue Streetscape Project. The Grant Proposal Includes an Ask of two million, nine hundred eighty-seven thousand, one hundred twenty-five dollars and thirty-seven cents with no local match required. In the Event the Grant Is Awarded, This Resolution Provides for an Agreement and Expenditures Not to Exceed two million, nine hundred eighty-seven thousand, one hundred twenty-five dollars and thirty-seven cents. Bill number nineteen twenty-six, Resolution Granting Unto Catsalas Tasso G. Living Trust, Their Successors and Assigns the Privilege and License to Construct, Maintain, and Use at Their Own Cost and Expense a New Steel Arning, Two Tree Pits Along Center Avenue, and Four Tree Pits Along Morewood Avenue at forty-nine fifty-one Center Avenue in the Eighth Ward, Seventh Council District. Bill number nineteen twenty-seven, Resolution Granting Unto HTA Federal North Mob LLC, Their Successors and Assigns the Privilege and License to Construct, Maintain, and Use at Their Own Cost and Expense Three New Canopy Covered Arnings on an Existing Building at twelve nineteen Federal Street in the First Ward, Twenty-second Council District. Bill number nineteen sixty-three, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Directors of the Department of Public Works and the Department of Finance on behalf of the city to Execute a Declaration of Restrictions and Covenants over a Certain City Parcel Known as Sheridan Park Ravine. One, to Provide Notice and to Ensure the Operation and Maintenance and Necessary Access to Operation and Maintenance of the Post-Construction Stormwater Management Best Management Practices on the Property. And two, to Prevent the Use or Development of the Property in Any Manner That May Impair or Conflict with the Operation and Maintenance of the Post-Construction Stormwater Management Best Management Practices as Required by Law. Bill number nineteen sixty-four, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to Enter Into a License Agreement with the University of Pittsburgh on behalf of the Steam Lines Management Committee and/or Owners of Common Steam Distribution Lines and Equipment Connected to the Bellfield Borla Plant. Two, in Order Permit the Replacement of an Existing Steam Line at the Rear of the Plant and to Perform Supporting Site Work for the Benefit of Shinley Park.
Thank you. You've heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage, but if I were the name is called, those opposed will vote no. Clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Hi.
Mr. Coghill.
Hi.
Ms. Gross.
Hi.
Mr. Lavelle.
Hi.
Ms. Strasburger.
Hi.
Mr. Wilson.
Hi.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Hi.
Eyes eight, no zero.
The bills haven't received. The legally required number of votes are finally passed. That moves us on to Councilman Bobby Wilson, Committee on Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill number nineteen ninety-one, Report of the Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for October sixth, twenty twenty-one, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number nineteen thirty-three, Resolution Providing for an Agreement with the Jewish Healthcare Foundation to Provide Administration and Operating Expenses, Housing and Housing-Related Supportive Services to Persons with HIV AIDS and their Families at a Cost Not to Exceed one million, two hundred and two thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars. Bill number nineteen thirty-four, Resolution Further Amending Resolution number seven ninety-seven, entitled Resolution Adopting and Approving the Twenty Eighteen Capital Budget, Twenty Eighteen CDBG Program and the Twenty Eighteen through Twenty Twenty Three Capital Improvement Program, so as to Reduce Community-Based Organizations by fifteen thousand dollars and Increase Neighborhood Economic Development by fifteen thousand dollars and Authorize a Subsequent Agreement. Bill nineteen thirty-five, Resolution Further Amending Resolution number eight sixteen, entitled Resolution Adopting and Approving the Twenty Sixteen Capital Budget, Twenty Sixteen CDBG Program and Approving the Twenty Sixteen through Twenty Twenty One Capital Improvement Program, so as to Reduce Community-Based Organizations by seven thousand, six hundred and nine dollars and eighty-two cents and Increase Neighborhood Economic Development by seven thousand, six hundred and nine dollars and eighty-two cents and Authorize a Subsequent Agreement. Bill number nineteen thirty-six, Ordinance Accepting a New Street Name, Lor Court, in the Sixth Ward of the City as per Recommendation by the City of Pittsburgh Addressing Committee. The Following Street Name was Approved by CPAC in February of twenty twenty-one. The Name Listed in this Ordinance shall be made official in accordance with Pittsburgh Code, Title Four Public Places and Properties, Chapter four twenty, Uniform Street Naming and Addressing.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage, but if I were the name is called, those opposed will vote no. With the clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill.
Hi.
Ms. Gross.
Hi.
Mr. Lavelle.
Hi.
Ms. Strasburger.
Hi.
Mr. Wilson.
Hi.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Hi.
Eyes seven, no zero.
Thank you. The bills haven't received. The legally required number of votes are finally passed. And that moves us on to Councilwoman Erica Strasburger, Committee on Intergovernmental, wait, Innovation, Performance and Asset Management.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Strasburger presents Bill number nineteen ninety-two, Report of the Committee on Innovation, Performance and Asset Management for October sixth with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number nineteen thirty-seven, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to Enter Into Startup Participation Agreements with Selected Entities as a Part of the Seventh Cohort of PGH Lab and Further Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Innovation to Enter Into Program Participation Agreements with Local Municipal Entities to Allow Such Entities to Test Products and Services as Part Through PGH Lab.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage, but if I were the name is called, those opposed will vote no. With the clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill.
Hi.
Ms. Gross.
Hi.
Mr. Lavelle.
Hi.
Ms. Strasburger.
Hi.
Mr. Wilson.
Hi.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Hi.
Eyes seven, no zero.
Thank you. The bills haven't received. The legally required number of votes are finally passed. And that moves us on to our last committee of the day, Councilwoman Deborah Gross, Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill number nineteen ninety-three, Report of the Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs for October sixth, twenty twenty-one, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number nineteen twenty-nine, Resolution Adopting the Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for the six thirty-five Smithfield Street Renovations Project, which will involve the development of a forty-seven multi-unit apartment complex with the first floor devoted to restaurants and office space. The Site Address is six thirty-five Smithfield Street in the Sixth Ward. Bill number nineteen thirty, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for the Proposed Recreation and Wellness Center and Hillside Housing Project located at the University of Pittsburgh Campus along O'Hara Street and University Drive A.
Thank you. You've heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage, but if I were the name is called, those opposed will vote no. With the clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill.
Hi.
Ms. Gross.
Hi.
Mr. Lavelle.
Hi.
Ms. Strasburger. Mr. Wilson. Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Hi.
Eyes seven, no zero.
Thank you. The bills haven't received. The legally required number of votes are finally passed. And that moves us on to motions and resolutions, and I have a meeting announcement, a few meeting announcements. Council will hold our standing committee's meeting tomorrow, Wednesday, October thirteenth at ten a.m., chaired by Councilman Lavelle. Speaker registration for this meeting closes at nine a.m. tomorrow morning. To register, fill out the sign-up form on the city council, on the, I'm sorry, on the council meeting webpage. You may also call the city clerk's office at four one two, two five five, two one three eight. Council's Repportionment Advisory Committee will hold the first meeting today at five p.m. in the large conference room. We will also make it available virtually to those who are serving on the committee and unable to attend in person. The School Board Repportionment Advisory Committee will hold their first meeting on Thursday, October twenty-first at five p.m. in the large conference room. We will also make it available virtually to those unable to attend in person and serving on the committee. And do we have anything from members? I would just like to say, just, I want to thank, I know that council sometimes gets a lot of criticism, but I want to thank the council members for working through a pandemic from home with children, with their families. And I think that when I hear the attacks on members, I don't think people realize the time that they put in, long after we leave these offices, and how much time they do work from home. And so I just want to thank the council members, and I heard the comments with Councilman Lavelle and Councilwoman Strasburger and Councilwoman Gross. And I just want to say, they all work so hard and try to do some amazing things in the community. So I just want to thank you all for your work and thank the public for their patience as we try to figure and navigate through this whole pandemic and how we can work together and do the things that we need to have done. So with that said, I just want to thank you all, and assure everybody that everybody is working really hard. With that said, anything else from members?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilwoman.
Well, thank you first for your comments. I appreciate that. And I want to wholeheartedly agree. I know that every council member puts in a significant amount of time. We don't work eight-hour days. We work twelve-hour, you know, fourteen-hour days oftentimes. I really wanted to just spotlight the proclamation that I had read into the record today and call to attention that October thirteenth is, sorry, October fourteenth this year is going to be call to attention that October 13th is, sorry, October 14th this year is going to be Children's Environmental Health Day, and the importance, it's really highlighting the importance of clean air and water and safe food and consumer products and everything for children's health. And I've been, you know, so pleased to be working alongside of Councilman Wilson, Councilwoman Gross, and Councilman O'Connor to develop the lead ordinance that we plan on introducing later this fall, and, you know, so, so many organizations that have been really at the helm, at the, let's say, Allegheny Coalition, to help inform us about the dangers of lead and what we can do at the city level, also in concert with the county, to protect children from lead, because it's such a serious health risk, and this proclamation aims to call attention to the dangers of lead and what we can do at the city and region at our local governmental levels about it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Anything else from members? Can I just ask, Madam Clerk, you were acknowledged in a article, and I just want you to mention it. I know you don't want me to, but I want you to mention it, because I want people to realize the professional staff that we have with your leadership, and I also want to acknowledge that we actually received a really nice email from somebody who often criticizes council but gave a glowing report of our clerk's office for all the work that they do. So I just, so I think it's appropriate time to mention it.
So the state of Pennsylvania does not currently have a learning institute or a training institute or an association for municipal clerks, so we've been trying to push to establish Pennsylvania Association for Municipal Clerks so that we can train our deputy clerks and clerks in a training environment. So we've been spearheading, me along with three other clerks in the state of Pennsylvania have been spearheading, doing a, Albright College has agreed to serve as the institute for us forming this book clerk's training, so we're kicking it off right now, so we're kind of proud of that.
And our madam clerk was highlighted in the article, so I just want to make sure. Thank you. Thank you for your work. With that said, can I have a motion to excuse the absent members? Approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Adjourn. Thank you, everyone.